And with that, I bring tonight's planning zoning meeting to order. Anybody else? Change? Time that-
For twenty twenty-two, Svietskaya appointed- inspired January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Chair Terry will administer the oath of office to Randy Placence and Gabriel Hanchin.
All right, please raise your right hand. And-
I, Randy Placence, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the City of East Bethel Planning Commission in this county of Anoka and the state of Minnesota to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you.
I, Gabriel Hanchin, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the City of East Bethel Planning Commission in the county of Anoka and the state of Minnesota to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. And now, the moment you've been waiting for.
A question, please.
And not yet, the moment you've been waiting for. Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I was curious that, we were not the only ones who were appointed to chair. Did the other members need to be re- met, retake the oath of office?
So technically by code, Planning Commission is not required to do the oath of office-
Okay.
-because it does not have two city council members on the board. So what has been standard practice for the city has been to maintain the oath of office for all current members than the ones that are continuing. The oath of office is for new members and people who are coming back to the Planning Commission.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, Celeste. Meeting, we were uncertain as to whether Sharon wanted to go from vice chair to chair. And she's expressed a lack of interest in that office, so it is up for whoever. Which means anyone would like to nominate someone, or multiples, and then we can-
I'll nominate Tanner Belfany for the chairperson.
Which is fine, except does it matter that, in terms of length of service?
So the requirement per code is the chairperson shall be chosen from the committee or commission membership annually to serve for a period of one year, provided that no chairperson shall be elected who has not completed at least one year as a member of the committee or commission. So on its face Tanner has completed that.
So prior years, great, okay. I'll second the motion. Anybody else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations. Vice chair.
I'll nominate chair, if you so would like.
Well-
Sorry, maybe I misunderstood our conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I'm always happy to serve as vice chair, but I guess I just don't want to be in the same situation the next year, if you're thinking that I'm going to be the chair the next year. Because I don't think I'll want to be chair. So if anybody else wants to help out as vice chair-
Oh, yeah.
Fantastic. Kelly?
Vice chair.
Is the chair more comfortable? Is Lisa- It was a waiter once, five, twenty years ago.
Right.
Thank you. We got a full rest here. Thank you Chair Terry for your previous service. Pack it back up. Now we have item five.
Planning Commission is requested to hold a public hearing and consider recommendation for a variance request to allow for a reduction in setback from the ordinary high water line. The property is located in the Coon Lake, the CL Coon Lake zoning district. The property owner would like to replace an existing cabin that was built in nineteen thirty-seven. The existing structure is non-conforming, however, the non-conformity cannot be expanded without the issuance of a new variance. The expansion of the non-conformity is in the enlargement of the residential structure, not in the setback non-conformity. The setback of the structure will be the same as the existing legal non-conforming structure. In its present location, the closest point of the cabin to the ordinary high water is thirty-eight point four feet. The new structure would maintain a thirty-eight point four foot setback at the closest point. However, due to the angle of the new structure, the location of the corner structure measuring thirty-eight point four feet is on a different point of the property. The property owner will be removing a portion of the impervious surface surrounding the garage, but the existing garage will be remaining. Due to the location of the structure, the mature trees on the property and the size of the property, there is limited space for septic system with a drain field of an appropriate size. Without the approval of this variance, there will not be adequate space for the insulation of a septic system. The septic area is illustrated in attachment eight. A variance request for the expansion would still be necessary if the property owner rebuilt the structure with an addition extending to the northwest from the existing structure due to the proximity of the lake. A variance for a similar addition was granted in nineteen ninety-four for the addition of a bathroom and entryway as illustrated in attachment five. As illustrated in attachment six, it is acknowledged that the seven properties to the west of this property, all of which are situated facing north, meet the existing setback requirement. However, due to the topography and lot sizes, these properties have adequate space to meet setbacks and have adequate space for septic systems. The lakefront properties along East Front Boulevard, which are situated facing west, are similar in size, and nineteen of the twenty properties to the north of this property have legally non-conforming structures with setbacks to the ordinary high water within fifty feet. This is depicted in attachment seven. This meets the intent established at the time of adoption of City Code Appendix A zoning, section fifty-seven dash eight C two, placement of structures on lots, which states where structures exist on the adjoining lots on both sides of a proposed building site, structure setbacks may be altered with an approved variance to conform to the adjoining setbacks from the ordinary high water level, provided that the proposed building site is not located in a shore impact or bluff impact zone. Consideration of a variance requires the Planning Commission to consider the three-factor test for practical difficulties. The first factor is reasonableness. In this case, they're maintaining the same setback from the ordinary high water as is currently there. They're eliminating some hard surface to replace with new. It will still be a single family and same use as the owner's grandfather used the property for in nineteen thirty-seven when they bought it. At the time they built the cabin that exists today, they were the fourth cabin on the road. Now the cabin is tired and a total rebuild is in order. Bob intends to keep the same yearly use he has had for years. The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. What is unique is that they want to maintain what has always been prior to the new codes. The lot narrows as you approach the street, and they need to fit a septic system. They can do this by maintaining the same setback from the ordinary high water level as they have today. This allows to meet the setback from the current well and the neighbors to the south. If they move away from the ordinary high, they do not have room for the septic system. The third factor for the variance is that it would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The approval of this variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood as there are many structures along the lake that were existing cabins which were renovated or removed to build new structures at their previous setbacks. The new structure's aesthetic appeal will be more consistent with the other residential structures along the lake. City staff is requesting the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and recommend approval to the city council for variance for a setback reduction from the ordinary high water with the conditions as written in resolution, the resolution attached.
Thank you, Aaron. Seeing as this is a public hearing, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. At this time, anybody who wants to speak on it, step forward and come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing no one running to the microphone in a mad dash hurry, I will go ahead and close the public hearing tonight. This item is open for discussion, or it's open for motions as well.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Placence.
I believe, and I don't mean to be a stick in the mud, but according to Robert's Rules of Order, a main motion must be moved, seconded, and stated by the chair before it can be discussed.
Yep. That is correct, if we are following a strict Robert Rules of Order. But it is open for a motion to allow for discussion. Is there said motion for approval?
I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the setback for one nine one three three East Front Boulevard.
Is there a second?
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash X X, as it doesn't look like it has completed its number yet.
There is a motion, is there a second before discussion?
I'll second.
Thank you, there is a motion and a second, at this point it is open for discussion before vote.
I have a discussion on the Robert Rule of Order that we just talked about.
Can we add that to the end?
Well, it's pertinent to this too. And that is, we haven't, why, it seems like you should gather the information, the discussion points before making a motion, rather than like, we might discover something in discussion that might have someone want to change their motion, or alter it, or-
Again, Randy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I know proper rules of order are, yes, before an item is discussed, there is a motion and a second item is discussed, and then if there is an amendment to a motion, that would require an amendment and a second to said motion that we're discussing, and then once that was approved or not approved, then it would go from there, correct?
That is correct, and just because there's a motion on the floor during discussion does not mean that that motion would pass.
Or, or not pass, either, it is just allows it to be open to discuss.
Or not pass, and so therefore, if that were to happen, then there could be another motion on the floor after we've resolved this motion, unless it's an amendment, to go ahead and change that motion to decline. But at the moment, on the floor, the motion is to approve the variance setback.
And for history, and again, somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, if I remember right, the purpose for doing it in this order and waiting for the discussion, so that way if another committee member wanted to call, call the question in order to stop the discussion and just go right to vote, because there are times that discussions do go at length when sometimes not necessary, that would be the proper rule for it, am I right?
Yes, but there's more rules-
Yeah, I'm just-
-with a call to question.
Yeah.
Because that's basically another motion, which then would have to be voted on, so.
Correct, but it stops the discussion.
Until you res-
Until that's resolved.
Sure, so, again, I don't want to get into the minutia of this, and I didn't mean to, and I'm sorry, but a call to the question is basically another motion, and it's kind of an amendment on top of that motion. So that needs to be resolved before you can go back to the original motion.
Correct.
So if you have an amendment, then you would deal with that amendment first before you go back to the original motion. So they're kind of added on like a stack?
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
It's stacked.
And actually, Mr. Chair, a point of information, especially for the new commissioners, had, when he opened the public hearing, had somebody come to the podium to speak, we would have had the opportunity to ask questions regarding those questions in that discussion before a motion was made.
Correct.
And I think that's where the habit became, where we have, we've had so many things that have come before this body, and some contentious, some not, where that it involved discussion, and it became so much discussion about whatever the topic was, that the motion never got made to start discussion onset item versus the items that was discussed.
Well, and then the other thing too is that, just as the last point, there doesn't necessarily have to be a motion to approve or deny, but there has to be at least a motion to discuss. So for instance, had I said that I would make a motion to, for discussion only, then at that point, there could have been a second and then a vote, and then we could have discussed it before anybody had decided to make that motion. And of course, if nobody seconds, then of course, that item dies.
I like that approach better in that you could, I mean, not in the case of this one, because it's pretty straightforward, but in, when you have long discussion, by the time you arrive at a vote, you might have forgotten what the motion was. Or it might be lacking pertinent things, but you might not remember what you wanted to add. So just in the sense of logic, it makes more sense to me to, motion to discuss, if that's what we need to do, discuss, and then your motion is fresh with the information you have, and then everybody's mind as to what the motion is.
All right, everybody comfortable with the rules then? Sorry, no, don't be, it's, it's good, it's good, it's good to reflect, there'll be a test later. All right, well, at the moment then, if the discussion on the Roberts Rules has ended, we have a motion and a second, and it is open for discussion before vote on the approval as read.
I just had a question as to what these attachment photos are referring to.
Those are the photos that were the applicant submission. They went out on the lake, and it, so that's why they're labeled as the applicant submission. Those are various residences along this, the purple-
Showing that it doesn't change the essential character of the area.
And the construction of the new residents will be similar to those. So it's showing that the proposed-
The existing-
Those are all existing houses.
These aren't the one that are in question.
Oh, the one, the applicant's property is not in those photos.
Correct.
Yep. There's no further discussion?
I have a question.
Please.
I made a call to Aaron earlier today, and I asked where the well was located on this property, because I did not see it in the plans. I'm not making an objection, I just was curious as to where that was located.
Do you want, yeah, if you would like to go answer, I can actually enlarge this so you can point to it. This is the, this is Dylan from Howard Holmes, he is the applicant on behalf of Bob Houston today.
Great, if you could, please state your name and then speak into the microphone, just so the recording-
I'm Dylan Howard with Howard Holmes, I'm Bob's builder.
Not Bob the builder. So my surveyor forgot to mark it when he was out there. So to my best knowledge, our step, the neighbor's well over here is, is right around here, and ours is right, actually it is on here, I'm sorry, it's, we're right up, right up over here. And it makes our fifty-foot swing where our septic system was on that other, one of the other that you had.
So it's approximately right here.
Go back to the color frame.
It is marked on there somewhere.
It might be this way.
But when we drew a fifty-foot circle around it on the survey, we had room for that septic system up here. You have a few extra square feet of the bed size required. We're packing ten pounds on a five-pound lot.
We see this often on this row.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot on these.
Does that help?
Mm-hmm, so as you can see, it is on the lake side of where the residence will be.
Yep, and it sits up on top of the hill, I lived kitty-corner to this for about ten years.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I do have something. So one of the big pushes for letting them allow the same setback is they need a compliant septic. So right now, they don't have it, what's, this is just for discussion, why, what is non-compliant about their septic? Like, is it actually considered hazardous, or?
So technically, the septic system is appropriate for the existing structure, because they would like to add additional space with additional bedrooms, they will need to expand, and in many cases on the lake, the septic systems are older, so it may be more cost-effective for them to completely redesign the septic system, which we see a lot on the lake lots.
And rather than compliance, we actually turned this and put a brand-new septic system. But usually, a building that's required either to give compliance, or have a new design. So it's a new design.
And that can be tricky, like I said, in those skinny lots, so.
Yeah.
That's a good job.
I can't say it's fun to work and figure it out.
No, we've seen a few of those. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And does this go before city council?
On the twenty-eighth, it's next Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. That. That was our public hearing, item six, council updates, Mr. Mundell? Welcome back again.
Thank you, somebody shifted that. Good evening, planning commission members. Welcome to our new members, welcome back.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Brian Mundell, your city councilman and liaison. First off, the town hall meeting date has changed, it is now April twenty-first. At six P M, there was a conflict with the other date. So the new date is April twenty-first, Thursday. See, we had the, as you, items that were in front of you before have passed, the Buddhist temple, the Prairie Hills subdivision, and we will be having a joint council and planning commission meeting on March seventh. Up for discussion will be the home occupancy for automobile shops, and there will be a review of the Stone Group concept sketch. That's off of two hundred and ninth, I believe, right down by Pat Small Engine. I, was that in front, planning commission before, the first draft?
Yes, the concept plan had come through.
So you're familiar with it? Okay. And we got some little news from the E D, E D A. As some of you may know, that the city is engaged in doing an internet feasibility study and has engaged with Finley Engineering to do that. During the interview section for potential engineering groups, we had an interview panel that consisted of city council, E D A members, and then we also invited some people from Anoka County in, and another specialist. And we recently got news that Anoka County now wants to do their own regional broadband feasibility study for the ten northern Anoka County cities. And this is spurred directly from us engaging and starting our own study. And even better, their study will be funded with A R P A monies, that's the American Rescue Plan Act, and they will actually be reimbursing the city for our expenses towards hiring Finley Engineering. So that is approximately seventy thousand dollars that can go back to the city and be applied towards internet projects for the city. So that's-
Nice job, for you guys, that's huge.
That's excellent, yep. Then just some updates, the Panel Gold County Hearth is anticipated to open March tw- in March. Aggressive Hydraulics expansion is anticipated to open in March. The East Bethel Village Apartments Phase Two is anticipated to open in March. March things. Eldridge Second Edition, developers updating some of their stuff and anticipate having something in before the city in April. For last year, twenty twenty-one, the city issued forty-eight single-family home building permits. To put that in perspective, in twenty twenty, the city issued forty permits, which was the most since two thousand and six. So moving forward.
Consistency.
Yep.
Nice to hear.
The Anderson Meadows Platte, the grading base course, the street apertures are complete, so I anticipate some movement in there this spring. There has been some developer contacts for residential projects on the east side of Highway sixty-five, south of Viking Boulevard. Nothing substantial yet, but good that we're hearing news. And the city has been working with the owners of Viking Meadows Golf Course. Viking Meadows has been interested in selling for a while, or so the rumor goes. But the city is assisting them now with putting some stuff together to make, make their sales easier, and if that does go, that's a hundred and seventy-six acre site, that's right off the sewer and water district, and will be added to the sewer and water district. So-
Nice potential.
Yep, excellent potential. So that is all I have, is there any questions or comments from anybody?
I have a quick question for you. So the joint meeting that's coming up, I've seen it come across a couple times now about the home base for automotive repair, as it was titled for discussion, but I remember right, in our last meeting, it was, we were talking in general about whether it should be allowed in the city at all as well, so is this meeting going to be just about focusing on, on the home occupation piece of it, or are we going to be focusing on the entire city piece of it?
Of allowing it in the city, or as?
Yeah.
No direction has been given yet, I think it's, it will be an open-
It's for the, the home occupation discussion.
Just the home occupation discussion, that's like, I just want to make sure I knew where to focus the discussion.
Yeah, well, my understanding is it's for a home occupation, whether we allow it or not, if we do allow it, then-
I believe Tanner was asking if it was going to be made into a permitted use in other, like if the discussion was to make it a permitted use in other zoning districts, other than just as a residential home occupation.
Nope, 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 it's just for the home occupation.
That's what I wanted to make sure, because when it was up, when it was up for us in discussion, it was in addition to that, it was, if it was even allowed in the city, where would it be if it was? So I just wanted to know if that was meant to be a part of that joint discussion, so we're not spinning our tires in something that- spinning our tires in something that doesn't need to be.
No, it would just be for the home occupancy.
Okay, great, thank you, just wanted to get clarification.
No problem. Anything else? Well, thank you all for attending and making it out on this snowy night, and I hope all of you drive safe and get home. Thank you.
Thanks for your time, councilmember. All right, with that, before we adjourn, any other items to discuss or any other points of contention? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
So moved.